You ready, Becky?
Yep.
Okay, it's 9:00. We'll call a meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll also be meeting at 9:15 as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Both meetings following the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted at the end through the door. Our first order of business is to open with prayer. Commissioner Williams, please.
Please join me if you're so inclined. Heavenly Father, be with us today. Speak to our hearts. Give us your wisdom. Provide us with clarity of decisions to make on behalf of our constituents and serve them. Be with our law enforcement, our first responders, and our military, both here and abroad, and protect them as they protect our freedoms. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Next item is to approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on June 17, 2024. Entertained motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting from Monday, June 17, 2024.
Motion and second. Roll call vote. Wulver?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brunns?
Upstain?
Hughley.
Next item. Claims and treasures receipts as presented. I think we have those to review in our packet. Entertain a motion. I'd like to have a motion so that we could consider the claims and treasures receipts as presented, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second.
Now, discussion.
Jason, it looks as though the North Platteville project is completed?
Almost completely by the time.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call vote. Tammy?
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye. Next item is to receive and file the fee report submitted by the Lincoln County Sheriff.
I make a motion that we approve an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff, in the amount of $1,432.50.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? Tammy?
Roll call.
Brunns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye. Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign the interlocal agreement with the city of North Platteville for fuel services. There can't be a motion if you're so inclined.
Mr. Chairman?
Did I say "declined"?
You did.
Correct that. Inclined.
I'm inclined to make a motion, sir, to authorize you to sign the interlocal agreement with the city of North Platteville for fuel services.
Tyler, I assume you've looked this over?
Like, three or four years ago. Probably got changed since then.
The amount is the same also?
Yes, it actually is.
It's the same.
Hundreds of pennies. Oh, yep. Did we get a second?
No. Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion on the interlocal with the city of North Platteville for fuel services? Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye. Thank you.
Oh, I see what happened.
No.
It just got caught on the one in front of it.
Yeah, look here. Tammy was meeting this last week. I didn't turn that in yet.
I haven't turned that in yet. Okay.
That needs to come back this morning.
Thank you. Yeah.
They had them coming. They were different.
They had the time sheets with them.
Yeah. A ring. Threw me off.
Was throwing me off.
I couldn't tell what was going on for a minute.
That's for Nicole. Yeah, because mine should have turned out soon. Have her posted as hurting anything.
So, Nicole's gone. Not much right now. There's nothing going on. Barry's doing it. Barry's doing it.
Okay.
He's going to come in tomorrow when he gets back and this is...
Stay up.
What about Charles?
He's going to sign it. Sounds good.
Look, Barry, if he gets this in, he'll sign it up.
Yeah.
That shock him.
Yes, thank you.
Seems to be a bit of a divide because Barry has discovered in small towns. You've got to work around the coast. You're grabbing a lot of salt. Either dying them or... Choices are just... But he's working extra time getting more payrolls. So...
So, let's see how the interpretive... Put on Stephen King. So, he's turning in eight hours on repeat.
It might have been six.
Evidently, he has paid holiday. He must have, I'm guessing, in the middle of a...
What we need to do is firing one day and hiring another or something like that. We could do later, effectively.
Regular times. He must have planned on vacation that week. I don't know if he's successful in that.
He probably worked five to ten.
But it doesn't look like he had regular time for any other days like my husband said. We paid for the... It's usually we would have regular time and we're out for a couple hours or something.
Might have taken leave of all the other cars. I don't know that our policy prohibits that.
No, I don't either. That's the reason I asked.
Who were you wondering about?
You know, she put these notes up.
I wouldn't know anything about what goes on over there. I thought maybe it was...
But my only point is there, the other person had 20 hours. Okay? Which is three weeks and four hours. There's zero. So, it says he must have been on vacation for the last... I assume it's, yeah. But again, I'm like you, I wouldn't know, so I'll ask the...
I thought maybe it was our two building and grounds that worked the holiday weekend for the general project.
There, she was the last week, so charity favor. Other girls, no. So, that's the only reason.
Okay, so it says she...
We have that time.
I wouldn't know anymore. I know the others had like... So, he must have been on vacation.
No, he is simply between child support and attorney's office. There's like a ratio, all that. I don't profess to know.
So, am I just going to have more of that note?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The notes are from Nicole.
Okay. All right.
So, he comes out of child support.
I'm just done it, Laura. Thank you.
Yeah, go for Nicole.
All right, thank you.
This is showing some answers.
This is the end of payroll.
Good. Oh, this is the end of payroll, right?
Yes, yep. Does this one need a number? Or it just...
No, the transfer.
Okay, thank you.
It's 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, following the Open Meetings Act as amended and posted at the end through the room. First order of business is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held June 17, 2024.
My motion would be to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting, June 17, 2024.
Second. Roll call vote.
Williams?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Brunns?
Upstain, as I was asking.
Hughley?
Aye. Next item is certificates of correction and refund. I see none. Is that correct, Julie? Okay. Next item, offers to confess judgment on the following case numbers with the Nebraska Tax and Equalization Review Commission, 23 R-DAY 68, 23 R-DAY 71, 23 R-DAY 73, 23 R-DAY 74, 23 R-DAY 78, 23 R-DAY 79, and 23 R-DAY 70. Good morning, ladies. Would you identify?
Yeah, good morning. Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor.
Charity Farley, Lincoln County Appraiser.
Good morning, Julie. Charity? Good morning. Henry?
Good morning.
Ashley? I got them all in here. I guess I'll probably let Charity and even Tyler may need to do some talking on this part of it, too. We had some Turk cases that were in front of Turk, and after further discussion with the property owner, it's on a lot of his rentals, we were able... He took my appraisal staff around and let them inside, so we were able to make some adjustments on some of his rentals. So, in doing so, I think we came to some agreements on even the ones that didn't change. I think he agreed to withdraw them, so we won't have to go to Turk. So, there's values and stuff that we've agreed upon on some and withdrawals of the others. So, I guess if you have questions for my staff or Tyler, we're here.
Questions?
Not a question, but just a comment that I appreciate how well you work with your general public, and you're accessible and transparent, and it's nice to see this worked out locally. I appreciate that.
Yeah, they worked hard with Mr. Boo. I think he was pretty easy to, I mean, agreeable to let us in, so we can see what's going on, to be sure.
I entertain a motion to offer confessed judgment on the cases previously read.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept the offers to confess judgment on the cases with the numbers previously read into record with the Nebraska Tax Equalization and Review Commission. Tyler, would you like me to reread those numbers?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
We have a motion. Second. And a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please, Tammy.
Wulver? Aye. Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye. Any other business coming for equalization? We'll adjourn as the Board of Equalization at 9:19 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, again, continuing following the Open Meetings Act as amended and a copy of which is posted at the end through the room.
Normally, they're in a big packet at the end, but these were all tied together.
Is there anything missing?
Thank you.
Yeah, I was looking for my big board. Okay. I'm going to tie them together like that. Joe, these two claims are tied together, and they want to leave them attached. Okay. Let me see. Let's see. Maybe you don't see what's inside. He'll come and sign it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. The place for the employee, what is...
Morning, Sheriff.
How are you?
Good morning.
You survived Nebraska land days. I saw you out there on horseback. Few times I saw you.
You know, maybe I signed down there. All signing as a joint. You know, he signed his...
You're far from it. Okay, thank you. Those signatures are for his staff. The other signatures are for his staff.
Becky?
Payroll.
These two stay together, right?
Yes, please. Good morning, Nikki. These go with payroll?
Hold on.
These go with payroll, Joe?
Now, I think we are all...
Thank you. Oh, my God.
Yeah, I read the email.
You got an email about with that last week to our county. Well, that's not the first time I've seen that. It's a shocker. This was not signed. You don't get to sign it, just to be sure.
So, this is not signed. You don't get to sign it, just to be sure.
Yeah.
It's not signed.
Yeah.
This is not signed. Just to be sure.
Yeah.
It's not signed.
This is the end of payroll.
Good. Oh, this is the end of payroll, right?
Yes, yep. Does this one need a number? Or it just...
No, the transfer.
Okay, thank you.
It's 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, following the Open Meetings Act as amended and posted at the end through the room. First order of business is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held June 17, 2024.
My motion would be to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting, June 17, 2024.
Second. Roll call vote.
Williams?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Brunns?
Upstain, as I was asking.
Hughley?
Aye. Next item is certificates of correction and refund. I see none. Is that correct, Julie? Okay. Next item, offers to confess judgment on the following case numbers with the Nebraska Tax and Equalization Review Commission, 23 R-DAY 68, 23 R-DAY 71, 23 R-DAY 73, 23 R-DAY 74, 23 R-DAY 78, 23 R-DAY 79, and 23 R-DAY 70. Good morning, ladies. Would you identify?
Yeah, good morning. Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor.
Charity Farley, Lincoln County Appraiser.
Good morning, Julie. Charity?
Good morning.
Henry?
Good morning.
Ashley?
I got them all in here. I guess I'll probably let Charity and even Tyler may need to do some talking on this part of it, too. We had some Turk cases that were in front of Turk, and after further discussion with the property owner, it's on a lot of his rentals, we were able... He took my appraisal staff around and let them inside, so we were able to make some adjustments on some of his rentals. So, in doing so, I think we came to some agreements on even the ones that didn't change. I think he agreed to withdraw them, so we won't have to go to Turk. So, there's values and stuff that we've agreed upon on some and withdrawals of the others. So, I guess if you have questions for my staff or Tyler, we're here.
Questions?
Not a question, but just a comment that I appreciate how well you work with your general public, and you're accessible and transparent, and it's nice to see this worked out locally. I appreciate that.
Yeah, they worked hard with Mr. Boo. I think he was pretty easy to, I mean, agreeable to let us in, so we can see what's going on, to be sure.
I entertain a motion to offer confessed judgment on the cases previously read.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept the offers to confess judgment on the cases with the numbers previously read into record with the Nebraska Tax Equalization and Review Commission. Tyler, would you like me to reread those numbers?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
We have a motion. Second. And a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please, Tammy.
Wulver? Aye. Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye. Any other business coming for equalization? We'll adjourn as the Board of Equalization at 9:19 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, again, continuing following the Open Meetings Act as amended and a copy of which is posted at the end through the room.
Normally, they're in a big packet at the end, but these were all tied together.
Is there anything missing?
Thank you.
Yeah. These two stay together, right?
Yes, please.
Good morning, Nikki. These go with payroll?
Hold on.
These go with payroll, Joe?
Now, I think we are all...
Thank you. Oh, my God.
Yeah, I read the email.
You got an email about with that last week to our county. Well, that's not the first time I've seen that. It's a shocker.
This was not signed. You don't get to sign it, just to be sure.
Yeah.
This is not signed.
Yeah.
This is not signed.
This is the end of payroll.
This is not signed.
Yeah.
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 This is not the end of payroll.
Yeah.
This is not signed.
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 Yeah.[1080.12]
Joe, these two claims are tied together and they want to leave them attached.
Let's see.
He'll come out and sign it.
Okay, place for the employee. What is... Twenty-four.
Morning, Sheriff. How are you?
Good morning.
You survived Nebraska land days. I saw you out there on horseback. Few times I saw you.
You know, maybe I signed down there. You know, he signed his...
Those signatures are for his staff. The other signatures are for his staff.
These two stay together, right?
Yes, please. Good morning, Nikki. These go with payroll?
Hold on.
These go with payroll, Joe?
Now I think we're all...
Oh, my God.
You got an email about... With that last week to our county.
Well, that's not the first time I've seen that. It's quite a shocker.
This was not signed. He'll get it signed. Just in sure.
It's 9:30. Our next item is to discuss considering tort claims submitted by Denise Davis. And I would like, before we start, Tyler, ask your question, please, from the chair. In the past, I think that we of the individual making the claim would like to address the board. We allowed them, but typically in the past, it's just the kind of thing where we would forward on to our insurance. Is Denise Davis in it? Would you like to come forward, please, ma'am? We'd just ask if you, when you get situated and comfortable, just grab the sheet and if you'd sign in your name and then... Go ahead and introduce yourself after that and we'll let you speak on behalf of the tort claim. I believe we did receive a written tort claim each of us in our records to look at over the weekend.
My name is Denise Davis and I'm here because of my car, the tort claim.
Good morning, Denise.
Hi.
And so I think that we have it... You pretty well filled this out, I guess. Or is there anything maybe that you feel you missed or anything that you would like...
Well, the thing is that I was driving down the State Farm Road and the dirt that they usually push down the center was on the side. And it'd been there for a couple of days, if not almost a week. And I had no choice but, because there was the tractor coming, to pull over that. And I'm just like, I started driving down the road and my car, I heard this clunk and my car started overheating. And come to find out, it pushed the bumper up, which pushed the braces and everything. It just went on up. And I'm like, cars aren't made like they used to be.
Okay. Any questions for Denise? I would entertain if there are no questions.
Move that we forward this tort claim submitted by Denise Davis on to our insurance broker.
Second. Motion is second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Rule call, please, Tammy.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Woller?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye. Rule forward this on to our insurance carrier and they'll do their investigation. I think probably go from there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Good morning, Ashante.
Good morning. How is everybody doing today?
Good. How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Warming up out there already?
Uh, kind of. Not really.
It's 9:35. Next item is to discuss consider updated contribution agreement with Dormy Network for asphalt overlay on the North Maxwell Road. Is that you, Justin, or Jason, I mean, or...
No, that's me.
Okay.
The attorney for the Dormy Network reached out to me, Alex. They are at a point in their construction where they were apparently ready, were just about ready for Shellco to put down this extra quarter mile of blacktop that were required as part of that conditional use permit. As the board may remember, a couple of years ago, we entered into a contribution agreement with them. We agreed to pay half at that time. It was about $452,000. That number has since gone up a little bit, about $20,000 over two years. So not much.
I'm surprised. That's all it's gone up.
Yeah. So the increase is very, very minor compared to inflation over that same period of time. But I did let Alex know that the board already agreed to contribute half of the last number, not this number. And so that if they wanted us to contribute half of this, they had to ask. And so that's what we're here for. I have his number. He is on standby for me to call if the board would like to talk to him. If you feel that's necessary.
In your conversations with him, Tyler, did it... Did they appear comfortable on their end to pay their half? Okay. And so the question would be probably, we've already agreed to pay half, but we had a fixed amount before we were paying half of, correct?
Correct. We had agreed to pay the half.
So the action probably would be then, I'm asking for this board to see if we wanted to... With the understanding that Dormy would pay half, if we still wanted to contribute half of the new amount, is that correct?
Yes. That's effectively what we're here for.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Dormy's contribution is also going up, correct?
It's still going to be a 50-50 split. The bottom line number just went up, $20,000.
Okay. If somebody would like to make a motion to that understanding, we can discuss it.
I would make a motion that Lincoln County update their contribution agreement with Dormy Network for the asphalt overlay on North Maxwell Road to be 50-50 of the new proposal from Shellco Asphalt paving in the amount of, total amount of that proposal being $474,805. And then Lincoln County pay 50% of that. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? This is for about a half mile, is that correct?
Quarter mile, I believe.
Is that rate in line with what we're paying for other roads?
It is about a half mile, 2,400 foot.
It says here 2474, any of your feet.
Jason, I hate to always put you on the spot, but you're the one that deals with this week in and week out. Is that an increase that is comparable to all the other increases that we've experienced in expense for asphalt in the last two years?
Yes, and if you look at the inch-ton price, they're not doing anything really comparable to this, you know, hold up, but inch-ton price.
And this is for a 60-inch overlay, is that correct?
I had a conversation with Mark Ruga from the Dormy Network. He gave me a call late last week. And he said that they did approach a few other companies that do this work, Western and whatnot, and they were considerably higher. So...
I think that has been our experience with Shellco, that they give us very competitive bids, so...
Other questions, comments? Rule call, vote, Tammy, please.
Brunz?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Woller?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye. Thank you. Another minute, we can talk about our favor subject.
Food? Food.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you.
It's 9:40. Next item discussed, consider a contract with Trinity Food Services for the Lincoln County Detention Center. Good morning, Sheriff Kramer.
Good morning. Lieutenant Ball couldn't be here today because she took some days off.
Good for her.
Good for her, yeah.
We're here today for the food contract. They sent out a contract originally that didn't quite match the RFP as far as how we were going to increase the cost every year. The RFP said it was CPI, cost of living. And then when we got the contract, it was CPI, cost of living, or an agreed increase on food costs, which that language in itself leaves us pretty vulnerable. So I don't know what they finally ended up with, Tyler.
They just took out that second option altogether.
Good.
So it's just the CPI increase? I like that.
Okay.
This particular contract has gone back and forth between Jerome Penny and I and Trinity a couple of times now. But at this point, it's at a place where I'm comfortable with it. They've adjusted the pricing increases to match what the RFP required of them. I would point out for the board, the termination provisions on both ends of the contract are pretty generous and pretty easy. And this is a... Neither party's locked into this thing for years and years. So if it doesn't work out for us, or then we can cut bait. Not a big deal. Otherwise, I'm very satisfied with the way this turned out.
And what's the length of the contract? One year?
Two years on the initial one. And it has annual renewals thereafter.
And Sheriff Kramer, it's still your opinion that these are, this is the best service for our facility?
You know, they came out and did a site inspection the other day and they had great things to say about our facility. And they're very professional. They're bringing in all their own computer equipment and they seem to be very, very good. So we're looking forward to it. This, they're leaving actually, well, no. Summit is leaving a week before these guys are starting, so we have a week gap in there. But they agreed to pick up the salaries of the employees for that week.
Fantastic.
We're providing all the food that week of donated food that we have on hand, so...
And you're still confident that Cindy has enough food in there to do what you need done?
Cindy's confident and Cindy can make a feast out of nothing, so I'm not worried about it. I'm not worried about it.
She does an incredible job for you and the inmates in seeking out donations and making things work over there, so...
entertain motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept, approve, and you sign the Trinity Food Services for the Lincoln County Detention Center.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Tammy, rule call vote, please.
Woller?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Thank you for what you did on the panel.
Maybe that's a good deal, man.
Yeah.
Not maybe, it is.
Saw a nice shot of a couple of young men in your life the other day on TV, Ashante. It was very... Full buildings, it was like they did that also. They were on the floor, almost as if flying, they're not enough to meet someone on the outside, or maybe they're tall enough to, you know, they can fly inside. I know they do.
Thermal imaging. Thermal imaging.
But isn't that what it says? Oh, maybe shooting through the door. Oh, great idea. Well, that's a good idea. Keep some of his ass from being shot. Thank you. It's 9:50. The next item is a update on the comprehensive...
The next item is a update on the comprehensive plan for Lincoln County. Judy, would you come up for a please and introduce yourself?
Judy Clark, Planning Administrator for Lincoln County. This was kind of thrown at me last week. I didn't attend the last meeting, so I didn't know anything about doing an update. But the interesting thing is, I just received last Tuesday, I believe, a rough draft copy of the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan. And I'm going to call it a very rough draft copy. It's 108 pages long, missing quite a few pictures, maps, those types of things, but a lot of the narrative is there. I think I'm on page 24, so that tells you how the readers are going.
You're a good bit ahead of me.
But I did take that document and send it to the two committee members, which was Michaela Woller and Chris Brunz, and sent them out a copy. And I do have my staff secretary reading it also. So we're going through that. Hopefully, we can get it in what I would call a draft form versus a rough draft form. And then at that point, I would be willing to share the document with pretty much anybody who wants to see it. So that's where we're at. I believe we're still on target for hopefully getting it in front of everybody September, October for adoption.
Which was the projected timeframe?
That was the projected timeframe, yep. So we're on schedule. And at that point, we did this 10, 12 years ago. So what happens is, once we get it in a form that is very presentable, they will hold a couple of just public meetings with just the general public before going to Planning Commission for proposed adoption, and then, of course, here for final adoption. So that's where we're at. If you have any questions? Be happy to help you, but like I said, I've only made it to page 24 so far.
No, that's exactly what I... I was just trying to get an update as to where we were at. Hadn't heard anything for a while, and I thought you would probably be the appropriate person to go to. I'm glad that we have a Planning and Zoning Committee that along with yourself can be reviewing it and offer feedback back and forth, you know, sort of a dialogue amongst the committee members and yourselves. So that's great. Questions, comments?
Committee members, other members?
My comment would be, I really appreciate the work that Judy and her team has done for Lincoln County with regard to planning and zoning. Consistently across the state, Lincoln County is pointed to as an example of how things should be done, and that is due in large part to Judy and the staff that she's leading, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I concur. And thanks for your thorough feedback there. The only questions I had were whether you felt they were at a point in progression where you were comfortable with. I do appreciate, at all the meetings we go to in Kearney, Keith Marvin and Jesse have been very free with their feedback and ideas, and I know that they've been working to move this forward, so I have a lot of reading ahead of me.
Me too.
I have some highlights on the few pages I've made it through, but it looks like they're really, really putting a lot into it and doing a good job.
The population and housing section, I hope we can change a lot of that, because population projections still have us at a decline, which that comes from the U.S. Census Bureau. And hopefully, you know, I was a little disappointed, not that I can change that, but hopefully we can do some things to attract people to Lincoln County and to, you know, keep our kids here or get them to come back. And I think with what we're doing with all the development that's going on, I do think those numbers will change in the future.
I would compare with that. I think that the U.S. government oftentimes moves at a snail's pace, and even though there have been a lot of conversations with certain people at that level, the people that are crunching the data, they just aren't caught up with all the wonderful things that we have going on here.
Yep.
You know, my only comment would be that, I won't say disappointment, but at least I noted that with them being specifically working on Lincoln County, it's not like a couple of our larger projects aren't noticed, you know. I'm not sure that was really in my mind, taken into account when we look at population trends. I mean, to look at a trend, a federal trend, is one thing, but when you're asked to address a specific area, I was hoping that maybe there would have been some more thought given to where we're at, as you mentioned, Judy. That was a little disappointing to me. Thank you.
Yep.
I do feel like when we look at trends, we tend to look at past and not future projections. So I noticed that in there also, and some of those numbers were a little surprising to me. But I feel like with everything we have going on in the county and...
It will change.
It will change, and it will change in an upward momentum.
Significantly upward momentum.
Yes, I agree. But, yep. So that's where we're at, and like I said, once we get it in a better, what I would call not a rough draft form, just a draft form, I want to get it out to everybody because we want to make sure everybody has a chance to take a look at it, so.
And those public input meetings will be well advertised and give everybody an opportunity to come and have some input.
As will the formal ones when we get ready to do it. Yep.
Yep.
Appreciate it, Judy. Thank you for the update. Appreciate you coming.
You also have to bear in mind, too, that that's the first time the census has ever been late. And there's a lot of issues with the census. I've had a lot of people contact my office, say they never got anything, so you've got to bear that in mind, too, with those numbers.
Yeah. Good to know.
Continuing, considering they're still surveying a year after it was supposed to be done?
Yes, there's a question about some of that.
These are all sorts of data border carrying.
Hush.
Where it's set, moving there.
I may not be understanding, this is just part of the contract?
No, well, your work contract is based on through data, and it's estimated, and then they go back actually to the Lincoln Census, so basically, you pay the employees and your claims and all that. That was additionally. How much? Thank you. It will be increased for next year, unfortunately, that the work contract.
Yeah, that's the way of the world, isn't it?
Yep.
Thanks for the explanation.
I know. I'm just waiting for 10:01 or 10:02.
Okay. Okay. I won't mention it again.
It's 10 o'clock. Our next item on the agenda is to discuss, consider committee structures, including standing and ad hoc and/or additional committees as required. I'd ask to have this put on today, so I think that it was a discussion last week that probably maybe expedited this a little bit more. I know I had spoken with Tyler a little bit, and Tyler offered some great wisdom and some good recommendations, I think. What I would like to do is talk about what existing committees we have, whether they might still be relevant, what new or additional committees might be advantageous to this board to consider, talk a little bit about the difference between a standing committee and an ad hoc committee. So I think I will maybe start that off. I think that probably my fellow colleagues would also know that a standing committee is something maybe a little bit more long-term and is set out where, for example, a personnel committee, we're going to have, continue to have personnel, we're going to continue that outroad. So those committees typically would go on in existence with not only a current board, but with future boards. There's different ways of, different term lengths, but I think it's not unusual and certainly typical in other county governments to have most of those committees, as we do, appointed or reappointed every January by the new chairperson, whomever that might be that comes in. I think that's worked well in the past. I think that some of those committees that I think that are probably... I would like to suggest a new committee. I would like to suggest a rules committee that other counties have. The purpose of that committee would be a standing committee that would be initially tasked with drafting a set of operating instructions or rules, and this might be in the form of a resolution, for this board and other boards to follow. Those recommendations would need to come back and be reviewed by the entire board, hopefully give them maybe a week or two to review them, if they're long enough, they may not be, ahead of time, and then come back and have a meaningful discussion around this table of any that we think might need modified, dropped, other ones added, but to make it actually a work of the full board, not just the two persons on the committee, but the two persons on the committee would get that process started and give a draft document to this board to refine and adopt. I think that pest control is another one I would like to talk about. I think right now we have an informal, I believe, and I can't speak to this, an informal, maybe prairie dog committee that I think that the two people that have been really carried the weight on that is Jerry and Kent. They kind of started that thing. I don't know if there was ever a formal adoption of it, but I think it would be, in my mind, if we're going to continue to have a pest control... if Lincoln County is going to continue to be involved with pest control, I think it would be important that that be a standing committee, and that, you know, may at some time go beyond, you know, just a prairie dog or something, but it just have it be a pest control committee that would be an ongoing standing committee for reemployment, I think would be important. I think that's also, we should have a discussion about the existing... and I'll talk about the inland port of the plains later, but that would be one for discussion. That's our next item on the agenda. Transportation Committee, I believe is a... I don't know if that's ever been formally adopted as a transportation committee, but I think it's... we need to talk around this table as to, do we need a transportation committee? If so, what is its purpose? Should it be an ad hoc committee? Should it be a standing committee? So I think that's a discussion we probably should have. So I throw those out as a starting point and like to hear your thoughts or comments. Mr. Chairman, Transportation Committee, would that be any way, shape, or form linked to the roads? Don't know. I think, and Chris or Kent, please help me, but I think that, and I'm calling it Transportation Committee, that might be the wrong name, guys. Help me out a little bit, Chris, on when you were meeting, I think, in fact, I was involved, I think, with one meeting at City Hall a year or two ago, really going to...
Yeah, the transportation project, our infrastructure project, dealt more with infrastructure than transportation. There are some counties that delve into public transportation. I don't know that transportation is probably something that Lincoln County wants nor needs to get involved in. But as far as the infrastructure project that we have, the planning grant that we're waiting, actually, we should get word on that, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. There was a committee, an ad hoc committee formed for that, that consisted of Commissioner Weems and myself, and then various other stakeholders throughout the community, so.
So that being an ad hoc committee, when we hear back on the, I'm going to call it, RACE Grant, okay? Would that committee then, depending on what we hear back, continue since the purpose was to... was the purpose to try to receive the RACE Grant?
The purpose was to explore potential infrastructure projects for Lincoln County. I don't think it would stop specifically at a reward of a grant, because if you get the planning grant, there's obvious work that would continue after that with regard to studying and work with whoever the professional consultants would be hired utilizing those funds, and then potential implementation grant funding after that.
And does that grant then deal with primarily a road system?
Well, there'd be a lot that would be involved in that road system, rail. Really, the purpose of that infrastructure project that we're seeking some guidance on was connecting our infrastructure with the Nebraska International Port of the Plains, so.
So I think, you know, it would be good for us to have that discussion, and if that's a standing committee or an ad hoc committee, so. Other questions, comments, thoughts, board members?
As the newest person sitting at this table, give me some history on the formation of committees and, you know, ad hoc as opposed to a standing committee. While I certainly appreciate the people that are looking forward and taking the initiative to explore areas that we do need to be addressing, is it traditionally that if we have people that are interested in that, they just take the bull by the horns and start the process? Or in the past, is an ad hoc committee something that's discussed and agreed upon by all of us here?
I'll give you my input first. The others can chime in. To the best of my knowledge, ad hoc committees have been appointed. Typically, they were appointed in the past by the chair. They were for a specific purpose, and as the name "ad hoc" refers, once that purpose is fulfilled, that committee automatically goes away. fulfilled, that committee automatically goes away or is dissolved. A standing committee is something that is more long-term and does not automatically dissolve at the end of a specific task.
Because it's a committee that serves a purpose that will continue even after we are no longer sitting at this table, like the roads committee.
Correct, and those committees typically in the past, there may be an exception, but typically in the past have been appointed by the current chair. That's, doesn't mean it has to be, it means typically in the past, that's what we have.
Okay, the pest and predator committee, or however it is officially named.
So that's the other thing, what do we want to call it?
Is that a standing committee?
I recall the meeting where I believe Commissioner Brenz was the chairman, where that was discussed and agreed upon. Kent and Jerry were our standing committee.
Which is why it's listed on our committee assignments.
It is, and maybe you're right, Chairman, that the name could be modified a little bit, because it specifically says Black-tailed Prairie Dog Management Committee. I feel like predator slash pest might be appropriate.
That would certainly be more appropriate, because that group is not only focused on the prairie varmit, prairie rodent, more accurately named. There are several pests that our team is working with, and I would certainly think that a standing committee would be in order and maybe update the terminology in the name.
Good. Kind of got a good feel around this table?
I support that.
All right.
I would also point out that we do have a rules committee that both yourself and Commissioner Woodruff sit on, so.
Any other additions, anything else we should have, or there's some we shouldn't have, do we need clarification?
I think that I was appointed at the beginning of the year to the Economic Development Task Force. That probably needs to be struck since it's been defunct since 2020.
And that was my error, period. I misspoke on that. Okay, I agree, Chris, thank you.
I think it's the first one on Chris's list, and it indicates no longer meets.
Correct.
I do have a question about the committees and other organizations that we are, for example, my PN3 task force that I'm on for NACO.
Good, thanks for bringing those up.
Yeah, is that something that we need to list on our assignments?
I think that, that's a good discussion, it may take one of all of us all, but let me just give you my take, it's my take only. To me, the committees that I am referring to are committees that this board either appoints or is directly a part of. For example, I have two gubernatorial appointee on state things that I don't count as part of this, it's something I decided to accept on myself, although it represents Lincoln County, you know, that's by somebody else. I think Chris might serve on you, some, you might serve on others, but I would, so let's talk about that. To me, the way I view things like that, those are, if it's an appointment by the governor or somebody like that, that's a totally separate thing. If it's something that, if somebody asks us to be on a task force not related to this, I don't know that, I don't know how to handle that, but I don't think it's anything that we should, that's something the person just sort of is doing on their own.
I would agree. I mean, I'm on several task forces, and national committees and state committees, but it'd be one thing if all 93 counties had a representative and we had to select somebody as a board for that, but maybe not appropriate for this listing.
I agree.
Although the work that you're doing is valuable.
Well, I agree with that, and that's one of the reasons I never brought that request back here, is because I felt like it was separate from this. It does have an impact on Lincoln County, for sure, but I didn't feel like that was something that I needed consensus from this board that I participate in.
You know, I think that we probably ought to discuss about, are we quasi-representing Lincoln County? I don't know, I think that, maybe that's a question for Tyler. Do we speak that whatever have a ramification to what might happen in Lincoln County? I don't know.
Well, that depends on things like these governor-appointed bodies or committees. I assume he's appointing Joe Hughley as Joe Hughley, not Joe Hughley as county commissioner, in which case, I don't believe you're speaking for the county. I think that's your own individual capacity. Now, Warren, all of you, obviously, that's not as easy for the general public to pick out as it is for me. I understand the legal distinction. John Q. Public may not. So if you're, if you're on these things in your personal capacity, and I think you all understand which ones are personal, which ones aren't, I would just caution you to be very clear that you are acting in your own behalf, speaking on your own behalf, and not as a member of this board.
I think that's important. Now, I have to say that on the two committees that I'm on and have been on for probably three or four governors, they are to be appointed from a county board member across the state. So in essence, there's a tie to the county boards, because you have to be on the county board to be it. Am I representing Lincoln County? No, I'm representing the Nebraska county on criminal justice as a representative from the county, so.
It's the brain trust that you bring, it's the experience that you bring from the seat that is the requirement, so. I have a, there's a couple that are on my list, and I think it's important to, that we as a board make a distinction with our committees. There's a difference between being a committee and being a liaison. A committee, you have, like, you actually have a, say, you have a vote in that process, whatever is occurring within that subbody. Me serving on the county extension, I'm a liaison to the county. I don't have a vote on their board. And then I would also separate the Ag Society and make that a distinct position from the county extension, because the Ag Society is its own body, but I'm also a liaison to the Ag Society. I don't have a vote on that body, so.
And I think we all have committees like that, right?
Yeah. So, for example, let's talk about liaison. Liaison, liaison to me is singular, but liaisons, there could be two, but it would make sense if it's a liaison, that that person goes, reports back and forth, that's what I hear, that's what they said, they would request this of us, that is a, it's not a liaison between the two groups, a vote. So I think that's extremely important. I think it's extremely important that that distinction is noted as versus a committee appointee. And we probably ought to define, you know, the difference between a committee member and a quote liaison, because committee members, most, well, I can't say that, because sometimes they do vote, sometimes they don't. Good point, thank you.
I would like to say that I feel if it is a project that the county is going to be contributing money to, I'm not sure what to call it, I guess I called it the Transportation Task Force, where we, you know, sought the services of West Central and agreed to pay for those services for the, for the application for the RACE Grant, feasibility study grant. I feel like that is something that needs to be discussed with all of us in participation and all of us contributing to who we feel should be on that committee.
So that committee was done when Commissioner Woodruff was chair, and I do believe that you gave the blessing on, you served on that committee. The initial conversation was sparked by me.
Yeah, that sounds correct, yes. That sounds correct.
So that conversation was had in the.
Because at that point in time, what we were trying to do is just get ideas out in front of a group of folks that could influence, bring information to the table to find out what. We needed to know what we didn't know.
Right.
I believe, for me, the first I knew that there was a Transportation Task Force was when the letter came to us from West Central, and we had the discussion after that.
That was, as I explained at the time, a jumping of the gun by West Central. I reached out to West Central Development, West Central Nebraska Development District to see if, because it was an idea that I had to see if they could work if I brought it to the board as a liaison and somebody that could coordinate the multiple people coming together, and they shot out something prematurely, to which I immediately called the chairman and said, whoa, I wanted this on the agenda, and I wanted to get a feeling from the board and find out if there was clear direction. But that was addressed at that time.
With that letter, they already had a list of who was going to be invited to the meeting, and that had never been discussed here.
In that conversation that I had with them, brainstorming with Amber Cuskey, I had mentioned, I think, that these would be appropriate people, could you coordinate that?
Moving forward, I really feel like we need to have those discussions here and everybody have a say on who's on the committee and who's on the task force before any outside services are sought. That's just my two cents.
Makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, the Black-tailed Prairie Dog Management Committee had an impromptu meeting, and we think that name should be Predator and Pest Control Committee. We use the term management because our resolution several years ago involved management of the prairie rodents, because some people like to have them on their premises, and we put a program together that they could enjoy them if they wished, but not to harm their neighbors. But I think Predator and Pest Control would fit very well with what the name tag has been used up to this point in time, and I think we both agree that that would be a good name for that committee.
So noted, and in future things, from me, I think I will note it that way unless there's a concern about anybody else on this board as to not liking that name. If not, then from henceforth, let's call the Black Dog Prairie Dog Thing, Black-tailed Prairie Dog Management Committee, the Predator and Pest Control Committee, that'll be a standing committee as I understand. All right, good, thank you.
And as you noted, that group is still bringing in income to the county, and there's work still being done by those individuals.
The word-of-mouth demand that we have generated for that program speaks to the need that we had, so you guys did a great job forming that.
Other thoughts on any other committees that we can think of, or are there any committees that should go away? If we want to have this on for another discussion, I think that's, that's good. I think, Jerry, what I'm going to do then is probably meet with you as a member of the rules committee, and we'll see if we can sit down and think about what our next step might be. How's that?
Sounds good.
Anything else on committees at this point? Tyler, anything that I missed that we talked about? Okay, all right. Next item on the agenda, discuss and consider the county board committee members and the Nebraska International Port of the Plains. Let me start that one off. The, I don't think there was ever any doubt that the International Port of the Plains was discussed in this room. There's no doubt about that, because we had to, we were an integral part in getting that started. The reason I was really insistent in the past about asking about, was that ever formally acted on? I had hoped that it would be, but it wasn't, okay? To the best of my knowledge, it wasn't. I think that I recommended, I made a motion, I think, even.
No, not a motion. You made a recommendation for a committee to be formed, and that was on May 24th, 2021.
Can I finish? I wasn't done with my statement, thank you. I thought it was in the form of a motion that it be you two on a committee, because I thought it was important, I thought it was important, and Ken, because Ken was chairman at that time, and I still think it's important as chairman. I think it was important with you, because you were more involved with that than anybody else, Chris. You've been carrying the water on that. So to me, that made sense, that that be a committee that was formed and voted on here. I don't think it ever happened here. That was my whole thing. So that's what brought this conversation up. To me, it's important that we do have somebody that, and micromanage was never the intent, well, I take that back, I don't know what the intent of the other people on this board was. It was never my thought that we would not only not micromanage, we wouldn't manage, period, because we'd always talked about, once this committee was formed, because there wasn't a committee until we formed it, there wasn't an inland port until we got involved. Once we came up and a inland port authority board was in place, you know, that's, they're their own thing, they're the inland port authority of the plains, or whatever it's called. They're over there, we're over here. Is there a relationship between the two of us? Oh, absolutely. We have four and a half, five, five and a half million dollars tied up in this co-venture, okay, period. And so I do think it's important that we have someone attend those meetings, be aware of what's going on, not participate in the meetings, not manage the meetings, and certainly not micromanage in the meetings, but to be informed of what's going on, just as they probably ought to, they can do however they want to be informed of what's happening on this board or other things. There's, you know, we're still diligently working, and even today, a big part of that process comes about in having some people come out that, from the state, that need to do an inspection as to the property that we're talking about and about this, the ownership of that property and how that transpires going forward. So there is, in my opinion, a real need for that cohesiveness of information back and forth happen, not to be a part, not to be a voting member, not to make recommendations, not to micromanage, but merely to be abreast of these two, both groups have a tremendous interest on what happens out there. I'll open it up to the rest of the board.
So, as I was saying before I interrupted, and I apologize for interrupting, there was an ad hoc committee that was stood up in May of 2021. I personally believe that the ad hoc committee has served its purpose.
I agree.
It was formed for the purpose of exploring, putting together the information needed to determine if the board was going to put a resolution and actually apply for designation, see the designation through. It was utilized, again, for bringing applicants together and vetting applicants, but we took great pains in our resolution that we put together, even though there's legislation that allows for it, for this board to be hands-off of that body. So I think personally, my opinion is, especially at this point, this juncture in time, the board of directors for the Port of the Plains. the Board of Directors for the Port of the Plains is doing a fantastic job. I think the committee should probably be dissolved, but I do think that there should be a standing liaison formed for the port from this body.
Liaison versus committee?
Yeah. I don't think that there's a need for this board to have large scale projects on a continual basis anymore. That's the work of this body that we have worked hard to find and appoint and, and put in position to do great things economically, transportation wise, for Lincoln County and the entire region.
You know, I, I agree total, totally that that committee either should have informally been dissolved or we dissolve it because it did serve its purpose. I agree with you that there needs some communication back and forth. The way the legislation reads, right, wrong, indifferent, that is the County Board Chair that shall make nominations of either reappointments or appointments to that committee, make those to this board. They can do what they want to with the nominations that are made. So should this chair, I've already made them for this year, but future chairs, should that be the individual that is the liaison so that in fact they can see what happens at the committee, at the meetings? And how else are they going to make a recommendation other than talking to, as I did, the, the executive committee, which I understood were the president and vice president, Mr. Dugan and Mr. Keenan, to get their input? Because I, I certainly am not qualified to say, should those people be reappointed or not? But they strongly felt that they were working together well as a committee. Their exact words is they're very cohesive. We work well together and we've just started, so let us continue our job and do our job. And that was the reason I brought back the two recommendations based on their recommendation to me. So in the future, is that something that if the board chair is going to be doing, should that future board chair be the one that's that liaison? That's a question. To me, it would make sense because it would be there or they would be there or she would.
Does liaison mean singular?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know. That's a good question and I think we ought to decide as a group.
My perspective of that, Commissioner Woodruff, thank you for bringing it up. We have many boards and committees that are assigned to us as, as part of our serving on this board. Some of them, we have a vote in and an active membership as a board member. Other ones, we are there to observe, bring information back to this board, take information from this board. Weeds is the committee that I'm thinking of in that role for me. But considering the magnitude of our financial investment in the inland port and the rail park, I don't know why we wouldn't have two committee members, just like we do with the building and grounds and the road department. These are very big departments with a lot of impact in our community and I feel having two committee members that are active and, and come to the meetings, if one of them can't be there, then they have a backup. So I feel like having two committee members that are assigned to the inland port authority would be beneficial.
Are you thinking committee or liaison?
You know, well, that was a question.
I, for me, you and I are committee members on building and grounds. We don't have organized, structured, scheduled meetings where we have a voice or a vote, but we do have a voice. We're very active. We work with Booker and his team. That's kind of how I see the inland port is being a committee, not a, not a voting member. They, they have their own board. We should be there to listen and support and, and help them progress what they are trying to accomplish.
But, so I, I probably disagree just a little bit from the standpoint of, like, for instance, with building and grounds. Yes, we have a, we have a director of building and grounds and he has staff, but there's large scale projects that come up that require work from the members of the committee, whether it be a jail expansion, whether it be a probation office, whether it be an emergency management building, where those commissioners that are serving on that committee, they do have a lot of work that is done. I don't see that as the case with the Nebraska International Port of the Plains. It's literally a liaison position at this point where there's communication flow to this body. There should, at this point, there's not, not a need for the large scale heavy lifting that's been done in the past, in the past few years with the committee, the ad hoc committee that has served.
Keenan agrees with you. Just call him up and ask him. He called me.
Who's that?
Mr. Keenan. He agrees with that statement. We don't need to involve commissioners. That came out of his mouth. Ask him this afternoon.
So just.
No, let me ask. So you're, because I have a hard time hearing, you're saying that Mr. Keenan called you and said to the purpose of saying, we don't need two committee members?
Ask him yourself.
No, 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 I'm just asking you, because I didn't hear what you said.
I had a conversation and that was his comment.
Okay, so he didn't call you necessarily, but you did have a conversation, is that what?
He did call me.
Okay, and, and he would prefer not to have two?
He would prefer that we are hands off.
Oh, I misunderstood you, of course.
Having two active commissioners, he thinks is counterproductive. If you can ask him these questions yourself this afternoon, feel free.
Well, you know, actually, we've been pretty civil.
I'm civil, just telling you what the man told me. And we'll leave it at that.
So I, it sounds to me as though liaison fits this better than committee. Tyler, would you care to weigh in on that distinction right now or not?
The discussion that the board is having is something completely outside the realm of the law.
Thank you.
What you are discussing is 100% internal board structure. It has almost no statutory underpinnings whatsoever. So you folks are free to do more or less whatever you want.
You know, just, just as a thought.
Thanks for that.
Is, is there a, is there a problem to have the word liaison, serve as liaisons, plural, and make it a committee along with some written definition as this committee does not offer input, this committee shall not do this, this committee shall not do that? The purpose of this committee is to serve as a liaison between, communication between that group and this group, and to be ears, and let me finish. And that the, yeah, the micromanage thing, I'm not sure where that came from, but the only reason I say that is because of what has happened in the past. And rightfully noted, Ken, you felt that from day one, you said that you felt it should be hands off and you were very clear about that. In fact, when you made a statement last week about at the first meetings in Hershey, I'm not even sure I ever knew that they were held there, but so you've been very, very consistent with your point. But to that, to my point that I'm making, we usually had one representative there. Usually, right?
No, the majority of the meetings, we've had two or more commissioners at.
No, 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 that wasn't what I said. I said we've usually had one representative from the committee there. Maybe sometimes two, but we've usually had one, right?
Yes.
So if one was not able to make it, we at least had somebody there, right? That's, that's my point. To me, to have two people there listening to it, I don't think that's necessary at all.
But excuse, but excuse me for interrupting, but it wouldn't be a hindrance to have two people sitting there.
That's all I'm saying, but there might be 60% of the meetings, there's only one person there. I don't, as long as there's some communication back and forth, that let's say that person wants to take a vacation or something that happens to fall during that meeting, you have the person definitely involved. That's all I'm saying. I think that we should make it very clear in our guidelines and committee structure, if this is set up, what that inland port liaison committee is authorized to do and not to do. And basically, in my opinion, they're authorized to do nothing more than be a sounding block back and forth between the two.
I think, I think that that is covered in the resolution that we created. I mean, our whole role with the Port of the Plains from this point moving forward is to appoint the members and we have control of the property. We are, by numerous different senses that are in that resolution, we have no part in, in the decisions that are made, we have no serving on it, there's no vote, no vote, we have, there's a lot of checks and balances in there. At, at this point, I just think it's important to have an open line of communication with that body and, and nothing more. And if they need something, that they know who they can go to, to get information or relay concerns or questions that can be passed to this, to this full board. So whether that's one person or two, I think that more hands you have in a cookie jar probably isn't the best, but that's the prerogative of everybody.
So, I'm sorry, let me make sure I understand. So the, I agree with the resolution, you know, our job is to do this.
My point was, is we don't need to clarify the role of the liaison and what they can and cannot.
As long as the board's happy with that, I just want it clearly understood, and that's the reason I offered that maybe we should put it in writing that it's, that's all it is, is just like you say, Chris, it's a, you know, we're not speaking on behalf of the board, we're not up there representing, we're not presenting at their meeting, this and that, we're back, you're back and forth. And that's the reason I was hoping.
Mr. Chairman.
Hey, before I recognize you, I think you were, did you want to make a comment and I kind of shut you off?
Very good. I'm basing my approach to this on personal experience. When the, when the committee was first formed, Tyler had asked us for only the committee members, so Commissioner Brunns and Commissioner Williams, to attend those meetings and that it was up to them to bring back the information. And so I don't know when, when they officially started meeting at the rail park in Hershey, so I didn't go to any of the meetings. I decided, based on conversations and questions, because I represent the village of Hershey who will be directly impacted by this, I go to their city council meetings and frequently I was met with questions about, you know, what was going on. And so I had approached Tyler and asked him in January if I could start attending the meetings. And he said, well, I can't keep you from coming in and just sitting there, but that it wasn't our duty. I don't think any of us here ever felt, since they had their own independent board picked by us, I don't think any of us felt like we would go and run the meeting or have a say in what they were and weren't doing. But I know since I started attending, Chris, it's very apparent that you, you have a lot of involvement. They respect your opinion and your recommendations and it's just my sense, this is only my opinion, that they really appreciate and, and benefit greatly. I, I don't know where we would be without your direct involvement and your recommendations to them. I just feel like, like I said, I'm speaking from my personal experience. In the April meeting, I was surprised to be asked to go into closed session with the board. And your reasoning for asking me to participate in the closed session was that you really felt like two commissioners needed to be there for that conversation.
For that conversation because it dealt with a lease arrangement. And I don't want to speak the details.
Correct, correct. I don't expect you to.
Executive session.
Yes.
But it did deal with concerns with the facility.
Yes.
Which I know that you serve on building and grounds and you've had some concerns with the, the financial aspect and beginning the conversation with a lease arrangement. And so that's why.
I guess it was my impression because I had not been approached before that meeting or given a heads up that I would be asked in.
It was ad hoc and I received a, a message from the chairman of the Board of Directors to see if you should attend that. And I said, I don't see why not, so.
I just, from my perspective, again, I've already said this, just to recap, this is a big investment. This is, we put a lot of faith in this project to benefit our county. I feel like the committee should be two active members who are going to show up and participate. You know, in the, in the meetings, in the conversations, come alongside them and help them accomplish what they are trying to do. They, many of them work full-time jobs, they only meet once a month. I feel like not just your participation and feedback and the connections that you have from being a county commissioner, but Gary Pearson also, he, he takes a very direct and has a huge contribution to the conversations in that room. And I, I feel like having two commissioners, since it is such a big, important investment, I feel like that would do nothing but benefit them.
I, I, I agree and I think that with, with some of that. Gary sits in a little bit different role as a facilitator, being from a nonprofit than from us being elected officials on the county board. So I think the amount of involvement is probably different and should be different. I, I stand by my previous comments. I think it's, it's appropriate that we be a liaison to take information back and forth. I would have to want to get some comments from legal counsel, maybe at the time or something, because I'm talking about our legal counsel, which may or may not continue going, I don't know. I think they have counsel of their own to serve on their behalf, but I, before I would go into a closed session, I, I would want to know, number one, should I be going in there? And if I go in, how are people going to perceive, was there conversation back and forth, was there deal cutting made be in a closed session rather than just listening? And I wonder if it wouldn't be better perceived from the public that we have the, after a closed session of the board themselves, when they come out of closed session, whatever they decide to do, if they vote or whatever, that that could be communicated to whoever those liaisons were to bring back, but not be actually in the closed sessions themselves participating.
Tyler, were you in that closed session?
Yes, he was.
I get invited to a lot of those that I got want to be in.
Okay, so, well, you disagree with my viewpoint.
No, I don't necessarily disagree with your viewpoint, Joe. Obviously, that board is sooner or later going to want to have discussions that they don't necessarily want our liaison to be a part of. It's one thing to have them not be in the closed session, it's another thing to not give them at least the bullet point information necessary to bring back to this board so that you five can stay informed. So to that end, I think one person is probably very sufficient for that. My concern becomes, and this is why I told Michael what I did, those are the kind of meetings where you are, that's a briefing, you're receiving information you may later use to make a decision. So if there are three of you, I don't care if you're in opposite corners of the room, that's an open meeting. This board is having a meeting when three of you are there. That's my concern.
So Tyler, I'll address that. When I, when we went to the planning and zoning conference in March, I, we had a session based on ethics and. and rules and open meetings, and I specifically asked, and not just me, these are things that are happening in lots of counties. And the attorney, Dave Patac, Keith Marvin, everybody that was participating there said, as long as you are there to just listen and receive information, and you're not convening, and you're not making decisions, you're not violating any... There's no issue with more than two of us attending an inland port authority meeting, was their advice back to my question.
And that's perfectly fine. It's, I'm not the one at risk of prosecution. And if I'm not mistaken, the board has been prosecuted for a violation of the Open Meetings Act before, so.
Well, not related, nothing to do similar to this. Yeah, so I mean, that's like throwing out to the public, saying, well, you got caught with a basket full of apples, when actually I had a basketball or something, so, you know.
My point is, Mr. Chairman, it's something that folks do pay attention to, and it is my job to pay attention.
Exactly.
I disagree with Dave on that. I like Dave, I think he gives fantastic advice, I would defer to him on anything planning. Do that at your own risk, though.
Gotcha. So...
Can I, I'll just say.
Please, please do.
I will just say, I think we accomplished a lot here, got a lot of clarifications. The determination that the ad hoc committee has served its purpose, I think, is important to where we go next. And Joe, I support the fact that since the chairman of the board will be the one approving their recommendation for board members and making those appointments, I feel like two commissioners serving in those meetings, one of them being Chris, since he has spearheaded this project and has taken such an important, productive, active role, be one of those people, and then whoever the chairman of the board at the time for us be the second committee member. Or however you want to define that.
Well, we're on this issue. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Any comments, any thoughts? I think it was a good discussion. I think both, the last two items were great discussions. I think I've had a lot accomplished myself.
Sounds like the Rules Committee has their work cut out for them.
Unfortunately, I think you're right. Okay, so this was on for discussion only, so we could have this discussion. Next week, it will be my intention to put back on the agenda, discuss, consider appointing a committee to the inland port authority from this board. Okay, thank you. Any reason for a closed session, Mr. Tyler?
Nope.
Elected officials, department heads, or their representatives, any comments or concerns? Committee report time. Anyone wishing to give a report from any of the committees you're serving on, or an update?
Commissioner Woodruff, I'm going to let you have the building and ground report this week.
Well, we have good news to report about the emergency management building.
I'll believe it when I hear it.
Well, I saw it Saturday, and I saw it early this morning. All the timber is up, the basic frame is up. The raptors are supposed to be inspected at nine this morning. Has that, have you got a note?
I have not received any communication, but I did communicate with everybody prior, and they did not anticipate, and that includes the inspectors had been by.
And as soon as the raptors and the construction is approved, the siding and roof will start going on, which I would imagine is occurring as we speak. And by looking at the bundles of the siding this morning, it looks like we have a white building with red trim. So I'm anxious to get over there again today and see if, see how much of the skin has been put on the building. So, a lot of work has been done by Commissioner Ruler in this regard, as far as getting all the pieces together, because there were some problems with our contractor. Multiple problems, and this looks like it's going to be completed on time.
Good.
We have a few days left to make that happen.
Yeah. Anyone else wanting to give anything? If not, we're going to conduct a quarterly inspection of Lincoln County Detention Center. I'll come back over at the end of the meeting and go from there.